We stand for pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can take a moment of silence for the people in Ukraine as well as for the soldiers that have lost their lives in war, thank you. Open the floor to item number three, public comment. Is there anybody here from the public? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Please speak, um, right there is fine. Please speak loud and clear. We have a new board secretary, and so she just has to get used to everybody's name.
What's that?
I'm Austin.
Hi, I'm Alex Buzinski, owner of Huskett Sonic Wire, on River Street for the past fifty years. I'm here to make some comments based upon things I've read on social media and the minutes of the last meeting that people who knows all the details of what's going on down at my side along that river. As you know, we've got probably the biggest proposed building coming into Seymour probably in the last hundred years or so. It's a thirteen million dollar, almost hundred thousand square feet, land and storage unit. The buyer is Steven Valentine from Florida. He builds properties along the east coast. This is just one of them. I have, I have photos. Could I give photos to the board?
Yes.
Are you in the room?
Yes, he is. Please make sure Gene and Sheila get a copy as well, because Gene's gonna want a copy of this. You can give her my copy.
Can we share?
Yep.
How about when we do this? That'll give Chris is gonna want his own. I'm not sure if you wanted her to have one or not. I'm not here to create new rules. Okay, so you're all aware of what's coming, and it's in the works going for the boards. I know the town, if some members of the town are not happy, why I'm selling it to a storage unit. And let's back up. How many of you remember the first day of kindergarten? In your head, right? Do you remember your graduation from college? That's how long it took for me to sell this property. So it's not a question that I had a choice. I had no choices. This guy came along after sixteen years. I had ten brokers. I had Arnold Peck, AMS, Brady's, Louis Proto, George Smith, Pierce, Loop Net, Civil One, Real Estate and Fisher Real Estate, along with myself trying to sell that property. Okay. We contacted the restaurant chains. Nobody was interested. In sixteen years, a brewery, nope. Auto parts, nope. Banks, nope. Childcare, no. Gym, no. Tire company, no. Senior housing, no. Aeropodics facility, no. Yeah, he wanted to buy it, but he ended up in jail. Paint store, no. Now, the best one was Domino's Pizza. I thought the town could use another pizza parlor, but the town didn't find out. But we did contact founders. Two years ago, a residential developer.
Excuse me for a moment. Please note, it's the record, Chris Bowen.
Two years ago, a residential developer came to the town, met with the other administration, and he proposed a maybe fifteen, twenty million dollar residential unit at our place. At that time, the town says, we don't want that. They said, we want mixed use. And we guys said, we don't make, we don't do mixed use, we just residential. And people then said, we don't want that. So since then, if we had sold it, the taxpayers probably would have collected three million dollars to this day. But because of them saying, I don't want that, this town is possibly three million dollars short. Credibility of that man, since he left here, sold a deal for seventy-five million in Coral Springs, Florida, thirty-five million, wherever this one was, and eighteen million on Palm Beach, Florida. So the guy was credible. And unfortunately, the town turned him away. I'd hate to see that happen again. Now, understand, there is no interest in what you want on my property. There's nobody that wants to buy it, or whatever it is you people want. What they need is return on investment. If they're gonna spend two million, five million, ten million, they have to get that money back. And it would be nice to see an Applebee's here, whatever you want, but they've gotta make money doing it. They're not gonna invest that money in our town if numbers aren't here. They're going down to Shelton, they're going down to Sobsford, but they're not coming here. So I can't sell it to those people because they don't wanna buy it. Would I like to have a restaurant there? Absolutely. I think it'd be beautiful in the fall. It was my claim for probably ten years or so, until we figured out nobody wanted it. So, you know, I was just relatively disappointed. I'm glad I got the money and get the sale. But there's nobody, nobody next in line after this guy, there's nobody before him. So it's like, I don't know what you guys would do if you were paying twenty thousand dollars a year on a piece of dirt that doesn't make you money. And year after year goes by, finally somebody comes along and just wants me to tell this guy, no, I don't think I wanna sell it to a storage unit. No, it can't happen. It's business, I have to do what's right for my company. So I think you understand. These people aren't coming, you know, the people that you want for this site. Okay, why isn't it saleable? It's a brownfield. People shy away from brownfields. It's not an attractive piece of property. They want it feared by the state. We had a five hundred thousand dollar grant that people are aware of, and that way, the town had a five hundred thousand dollar grant from State of Connecticut. Unfortunately, there was a fire that took us down, three years in litigation suing the insurance company, and the state pulled back that money to get it used somewhere else, which makes sense. There's limited usable space on that property. It's four and a half acres, it's got a river in it, and it's got a mountain in it. So basically, you're dealing with a little over an acre of land in front that's usable. And to use that land, it's gonna cost this guy a small fortune to take down the hill, the ledge, and build up the elevation so it doesn't flood, it's in a flood zone, so that too. So whoever bought it has to put a lot of money into the land as well. So it's, it's not an attractive piece of property. It looks nice, waterfalls look nice, but not for somebody buying it. Okay. And I don't know if you can ask me questions, but if questions come up, I'm here to answer anything you might have, okay? I want you guys to be knowledgeable in this whole project, so if people are asking you, you have the answers for them. Okay. Now, I have to address comments from the social media experts. Okay, most of them said this project's gonna be ugly. We've got pictures there. It takes thirteen million dollars of ugly to build this. My wife says it looks like a school. That settles that ugly thing. I think they misunderstand that might be these little chicken coop units or something like that, I'm not sure if they have an opinion of it. I didn't see this until today. Some people wanted a park or a farm market, and that's a great idea, too. But I'm not gonna pay twenty thousand dollars a year to have a parking lot out there for a park for the town. Obviously, the town didn't wanna buy it over the sixteen years, so I can't afford to keep it for those people to look at anymore. Apartments, people want apartments. We can't put apartments. Eight years ago, he was told, no, we want mixed use. It's gonna block the view of the falls. Picture you see here, the building is built into the hillside. If you must say, looking at the property, it's to the left side. You'll get a very clear view of the waterfalls, better than you saw over the last hundred twenty years prior to the fire, the building actually, the factory used to block the falls. It's gonna create a traffic nightmare. They average about six cars a day in and out of this storage unit. So that intersection is a tough intersection with state DMT widening the roads, that intersection coming up. Every year, they're saying they're gonna do it, but sooner or later, they're gonna be taking care of that intersection, and they're addressing the traffic here. You don't need a big restaurant, you don't need a McDonald's, which you don't want, but you don't need traffic in there. This is gonna create very little traffic. The average storage unit is there for fourteen months, so people put, there's, your junk? Strike that, strike that junk. People are gonna put their stuff in there for fourteen months and just leave it there, and sometimes they die and just leave it, you know, for their kids. So there's no traffic there. Better options, somebody says? I explained to you what my options were. There are none. And somebody said, we need something to lower taxes. This is gonna be three hundred and some odd thousand a year of taxes? To me, I think there's over a couple of taxes. And one guy says, maybe it will contribute a lot of money, but sometimes something is better than nothing. And I think that guy had a little wisdom there, he didn't know what kind of taxes this was gonna pay. How does it benefit the town? Okay. You're gonna get, pick up around number three hundred thousand a year income from this building. There's not gonna be any burden on the schools. No fidget on the school. There's gonna be two people working in the building probably flushing the toilet twice a day, where sewer systems aren't gonna get built in. Water supply, wherever you use to make coffee and flush the toilets. Police, EMS, most likely not much for cheap people. It's okay. There's not gonna be any noise, no pollution coming out of this building. You went over there, there's no traffic. I've had homeless people living on my property this past year. We're creating a haven for, for, what did I say? Flight here. Yeah, homeless people living there, I'd have police remove them. We've got tractor trailers parked in that place, which I can't get rid of. This new guy was there. They'll have to fill out the report sooner than later, but those tractor trailers are a nice, or I believe those tractor trailers are nice for the town, and shouldn't we look at those, park there? It's a truck stop, is what it is, okay? There's even better landscape. I cut that property once a month, maybe in the summer, and that jobbys nut wait grows in a month, it'll grow that high. And I'm out there chopping that stuff down. This guy'll have the maintenance, maintenance people from here, they're doing the lawns, gardens, and so on. And most of all, it's gonna be on the top of the grand list. You got a thirteen million dollar building, probably, like I said, gonna be below T. Wright, Larry Janeski, who owns Eversource. It won't be above Stock and Stock and where other than on here. It's no little, you know, two and a half million dollar building up in industrial park. This is a big, I am. So in summary, you want economic growth, you've got a wall to beat through. Unfortunately, we're getting negative media on this. It does nothing for the image of the town. Not to look back on the old administration, I don't like to look back, there was a lot of bad news in the past administration. My property was, back in the day, on Valley Indy Drive, was called astronomical prices. Somebody asked for the, who was it? Who does the interview?
Eugene Jusko.
Eugene or the other one?
Ethan Fry.
Yeah, Ethan, I think. Asked him, what are they asking for? He needs us an astronomical price. You can't sell a car when somebody calls and says, what are you selling your car for? A whole lot of money, more than you could afford. You gonna sell that car? No. And I quote him on that. ECD, we're talking about it at one of their meetings, he's asking too much for the property. I had listed for one point three million. I have a contract for one point two million. To me, that's an astronomical price, like they said. But these people were talking without knowledge, our town was, telling people, interested, why bother? He's asking an astronomical price, it's not worth it. Well, it is to some people. If you people wanna sell this, other properties, we have Seymour Lumber, we've got Triton. You need to be positive about it. If you had headlines saying, Seymour welcomes thirteen million dollar project to downtown, no, maybe you don't want. Most of your married wife goes, how do I look? And you're looking, it's like, you look great, you know? You have to play the game if you wanna get people come to town. So you really need to get a better, positive attitude. You have people, people are gonna complain if we put, whatever we put there, people are gonna complain. I don't envy you people. But let's face it, you just raised the taxes on the people just the other day, or, no? Okay. Well, anyway, there's talk about it, let's leave it at that. There's talk about raising the taxes. There's an eight hundred thousand dollar, eight hundred thousand dollar void in there that we need that money. This guy could come along with three hundred thousand, add the taxes. How do you explain to people that you don't want that because they'll make a better coffee shop or a place to hang out or something like that? So I'll end it with, just remember, last time Seymour said, we don't want that, we may have lost three million dollars in taxes in that, in the two years since then. So thank you for your time.
We could put on the agenda, if the selectmen have questions for him, we can add him to the agenda, but it'll be later on at the end of the meeting.
I think this is a matter that I have to go through the Landesboards before we vote.
Okay. Thank you. I had to put it out there, though. Is there any other public comment? Any other public comment? No other public comment. We'll move on to item number four, approval of minutes. On your agenda, you'll see February twenty-second, twenty-two, Special Central Office Relocation Committee meeting. We do not approve those meetings because they are a separate entity from the board. They're not a subcommittee of us, they're their own committee, so we don't approve their minutes. But thank you for sharing. I know. March first, twenty twenty-two, regular Board of Selectment meeting. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Pat Lombardi.
Seconded.
Seconded by Chris Bowen. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain. Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero zero. Thank you. Item number five, discussion and take possible action on the parks fee schedule we have with us from the Parks and Rec Commission, Gary Populous. Gary Populous, could you please approach the board?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mr. Populous.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me here. My name's Gary Populous, to West Minnau, Seymour. And I know we have presented the Board of Selectmen to raise our fees for park usages for pay-to-play teams, as we call them, which would be such teams where they have to pay to play baseball, okay? Basically, these teams collect absorbent money from each player. Some of their coaches are paid to coach the teams, and this does not affect any of the nonprofit teams, such as like Georgia Hummer Little League, Seymour Babe Ruth, but that has been what it is, Seymour, uh, Georgia Hummer Little League last year, and Seymour Soccer. So the Parks Commission is asking for an increase from seven hundred and fifty dollars to one thousand dollars per team, and that's from the months of April to August. And from September to November, it would be five hundred dollars to play for these teams also. That is a per team fee for any of the paid teams. Some of these teams are from out of town that have asked for permits, and we haven't approved their permits as of yet until we find out we get approved on this with the Board of Selectmen. We're also asking for out of town players that are on a team, even the, even the nonprofit teams are twenty dollars per player, okay? That has been a standing policy of ours over the past years. Last year, it kinda came to the amount of somewhere around two hundred and eighty dollars, which was fourteen dollars, okay? Even that Little League or Babe Ruth, whoever had taken them in from Oxford or Antonia Derby, because they were not able to field the team, so Seymour, the nonprofit teams brought them in, okay? The two, the twenty dollar out of town player does not fall into effect for the pay to play teams, such as like, there's a team in Seymour, or an organization in Seymour called Running Up, okay? They pay, they pay. There's other teams also in asking to use our fees. All right? Also on the pavilions, okay, we wanna raise that up, or actually, it's not raise, but we wanna charge twenty-five dollars per event for residents, that if they wanna have a birthday party or a graduation party at one of the, at one of the pavilions on one of the town fields, we're asking for a twenty-five dollar fee. Or some even out of town families have asked to use these, so we're asking for a hundred and twenty-five dollars for out of town families to use it, okay? And that basically falls at the Public Works, Seymour, Seymour Public Works is all they are for the parks, okay? The men cut the grass and they do a wonderful job. And they have to go there and clean up on a Monday morning after, or after a Sunday or Saturday, they have to go there on a Monday, empty the trash barrels, clean up all the litter that's in the area, so we're just trying to help out with our, you know, our Public Works men, which they're very well, they work with the parks very well. And if it's a larger group, we're gonna ask them, it's gonna be a two hundred dollar fee for groups, all right? So, like I said, we're asking for these fees increased because everything's going up. We weren't able to get all the seed we need this year, Public Works proceeding the fields. They line the fields for all the teams, you know, we give them the schedules, and if there's a game at Chapfield Park, Gary Park, or wherever it may be, they line the fields for us. And they prep the fields also, okay? They, the infield, fertilizer's going up, and as we all know, gas is going up. So to keep the mowers running, it's gonna be bigger fees. So we're asking for that. And Bill Sewicki and I had done, had did some looking along with Rory. Last year, Run and Gone had paid two fees for the spring and for the fall season. They had paid forty-five hundred dollars and twenty-five hundred dollars. Connecticut Pride Football paid fifteen hundred dollars. And this went into some kind of a fund that it kinda got lost in the shuffle. So they're gonna open up a special account for these fees, because as you know, Bill Peck had passed, Bob Lang had passed, they were, they had a lot of things up in their head, and unfortunately, they took it with them. And Bill and I, we did not know where this money went, if it went into one of the Public Works funds or to one of the Parks funds. We don't know. We don't know where the money's going. And so Rory, I don't wanna kill her last name.
Matasovitch.
I'm sorry?
Matasovitch.
Matasovitch, thank you, Pat. She's setting up a special account, which I believe years ago, because I was on this board years ago when Dominic was the president, the commissioner, and it goes back a long time, and I know at one time, they had a special Parks Enhancement Funds.
Yep.
Okay, if I'm reading my writing right, yeah, it was an Enhancement Fund, and I guess there was money that did come out of, we're gonna call it Enhancement Fund, to pay Ted Waner, who was repelling of four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents.
I remember that.
That's, I guess, I know, you see the signs around, I know who takes care of one of the parks. I don't know which one, and I apologize for that, but I know they're signed, you know, down by the Veterans Park, by the old middle school, there are signs around, and I know some of these private businesses help out the town, and they pay, their men pay actually to mow the little section of the grass, so. But like I said, we don't spend our money foolishly. We had a hundred and forty-two thousand budgeted to us last year. We have forty-six thousand dollars left on our budget, which runs through, into June, till the new budget kicks in. I went to, I presented the new budget to Board of Finance a couple of weeks ago. We're only asking because the border parties went up.
Yep.
And we had cut down more trees for safety issues, and we only went up two point three percent on the budget. So we're trying to keep it low. I know the money is tight in the town, nobody wants to see their taxes go up, so we're trying to do our best with what we have. Public Works, you know, Sean and Frank, and the guys down there, they're just great. I mean, they work with us closely, they come to our meetings every month, they give us their reports. So that's all I have. That was the explanation for the fees going up. If anybody can ask, wants to ask me any questions, I'm looking at you.
Well, first of all, thank you for your kind comments for Public Works, which they've already started working on fields this week. Couple of questions. Pavilion rentals, so at present, you do not charge?
No.
Okay, so these are basically new fees?
These are new fees, yeah. And that came through Zach at the Recreation Department, because Zach is actually helping us a lot, a lot. He's monitoring the online permits that come in from all the organizations. I got a spreadsheet, and it's, you know, it's public information. Zach, to focus some of us a new copy, I haven't received it yet. So Zach works very closely with us also.
Right, so he's doing the coordination?
Yes.
Of the lining and other, when it's needed?
Yes, yes. He gets the permits. We oversee it, though, we make sure, and I do ride around to the parks. I mean, I, you know, if I'm going out on the road that day, I'll stop, if I'm headed up that other end of town, I'll stop at Gary, I'll go to French, and, you know, or Chapfield Park, and just to make sure there's no damages, because there was vandalism at French Park there a few weeks ago, and what he did, donuts and the up to, so.
So I have one more question for you. So if we approve these increases that you're requesting, how is this going to be presented? How are people gonna know about the fee increases? What, is it gonna be media driven, Facebook, what?
No, it's going to be a letter from the Parks Department to each organization.
Okay.
And if they don't pay, they don't get the permit. And if they don't pay, they don't get the permit. We ask for the monies upfront.
Mm-hmm.
We get it, and then we give them a copy of the permit. Because about three years ago, there was an organization that burned us for about $3,000. We gave them the permit, they never paid us. So, and that's when other people were in charge before Bill Sewicki was the commissioner, so. And you learn from your lessons, you know, so. And we put an arm in its mouth. If you want to play in Seymour, pay first, we give you the permit. And each organization has a copy of all the permits, of who was on that field at that time. High school takes presidents over French Park. I mean, if they're practicing or if they have a game there and, you know, Little League, their senior team wants to go there to either practice or play, they can't. They have to stay off the field. Senior high school teams take presidents. And that's, that's even the high school softball field or the middle school field, it's the same way. They take presidents over any organization in town. So, and we monitor them. Because there was one time where I had to go to French Park and tell someone, you don't have the permit, you have to leave. And I got, a big goalie coach comes up to me and he says, what are you going to do? I said, I'm not going to do anything. I'm going to call 911. That's what I'm going to do. And they left peacefully. That was about two years ago, so.
Chris Bowen?
First off, thank you very much for taking your time to come out.
You're welcome.
We really appreciate that. Got a couple of questions.
Yes.
One of the reasons that I was in favor of kicking this back to your board was because I'm looking at a, potentially a one-year waiver of the non-resident fee for nonprofit teams of $20, which you said we had 14 of those last year?
Last year was, I believe it was around 14.
Okay, so let's round up and say 300 out of 30. How painful would it be to be without, assuming everything were to stay the same? Let's just use 300 for the sake of argument. How painful would that be to your numbers?
Everything is going up on us, you know, the gas.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, even that, that's channeled through Public Works to see. But we supply the monies for Public Works, for grass seed, fertilizer, anything they need, especially tree cutting. Tree cutting has gone up this past year because it was probably about 12 or 15 trees at French Park going up the entrance that had it cut down that were, you know, in danger, not in danger of falling, but could have been. You know, the tree warder looked at them and, and, you know, he got an excellent price from, I believe it was out on the wind. He got an excellent price from that. And they did, they did very good for the town in Seymour. They saved us a lot of money. And that's where the money goes.
Okay.
We don't want to take anything away from the kids, believe me. Because I've been involved in youth sports as well as Anne and Pat and Fred knows. I've been involved with Little League for 15 years and my son's involved now. My grandkids are down there and Fred, you've seen them, you know, Pat, you've seen them, you know, Anne. So, it's, and I don't want to take anything away from Little League. My thing is, I want to see the kids on the field playing ball. If that's a pain in the side, I'll go back to our town, excuse me, back to our board. We have a meeting next Wednesday. We have to move our meetings around. I mean, we could, we could maybe drop it to $10 per player or whatever.
The reason.
It wouldn't hurt us that much.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because I can tell you, now, full disclosure, I'm the umpire in chief of Little League.
Oh, you are?
Yes. I got drafted. That was not, that was not an easy conversation. But I have our numbers in front of me for softball in particular. We have 12, 15, 27 girls.
Okay.
Across four divisions.
Okay.
We are hurting.
Okay.
We have three teams, we had three teams for majors last year. I think we're going to hold on to that. But we barely have enough for a full softball team, and that's before we get into All-Stars. We're looking at very, we only have six for player pitch minors.
Okay.
We're definitely going to be looking at merging somehow, some way with town, surrounding towns. The reason I'm asking for the $20 waiver, just for one year, is I want to see if we can get more kids on the field first off, because prices are raising for anybody coming from out of town too. They're driving in from Ansonia, Beacon Falls, or Derby, what have you. And they're also coming to our state, our parks for, you know, just to travel to the league for the majors, for the boys anyway. I think after post-COVID, we need to do everything that we can to get kids on the field. That's why I'm waiving that, so that if we end up merging with other towns and other leagues, we have something to offer, because we already charge more for facilities and the league than Oxford, for example. So, that's something to offer them, and then we can put it back next year. But we got to, after two years, we've got to get kids on the field again. And especially with Run and Gun and everything else. We've had this gulf where we've got everybody that plays travel and everybody that doesn't play travel. We're losing that middle ground.
Sure.
So, I ask you to consider that, would you consider waiving it for that one year in light of all that?
I'll bring it back to my board on Wednesday night, yeah, next Wednesday.
Could we potentially approve this, excepting that line?
I would say that would be a case-by-case basis, based on their review of the circumstance.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Bring it back to my board, let us, you know, kick it around and see what they say. But, you know, I mean, I don't think it'd be a big deal, really. I will bring it back to our board and, what do you say? Maybe it's a select.
I'm willing to talk.
They'll say only $50 a child.
I'm willing to, I'm definitely willing to talk to your board, if you're amenable to that. As, not as a selectman, but as member of the league board?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Anyone's invited to our meeting. We have open meetings down at the other end of the building.
Okay.
In the, I'm sorry.
Drummer.
Flaherty Room.
Flaherty Room. This is the drummer room, sorry.
I'm going brain better, right?
But I understand they need to start collecting fees for the spring.
I understand that, yes. I mean, Hack or High Water, I think this is going to be addressed so. But I definitely want that fee waived because we need to get kids on the field. And I think that that's the only way we're going to have anything approaching a softball league.
I know, I know, numbers have been down, they have been down on all schools.
Right.
It's not just, it's Pop Warner and.
And the officials.
It's everybody, yes, yeah, I know.
One other question before I turn it over to selectwoman Danka. Could you going forward, could your board add a column to say if there's a change, what the change was from last year? That was one of the things that we had a problem with. Well, we see that the fee, I'm sorry, I have a paper copy here. So, we see that the fee is here and we see why, but we don't have a comparison to prior years. Could you possibly add that going forward? So, that's what's proposed to us.
Okay, yeah.
It doesn't show an increase, so we just, we have nothing to base that on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can, yeah, that's public information. It's in our, it's actually in our minutes of, not last meeting, but the meeting before.
Okay.
From what it was to what we're asking for.
Could you possibly add that going forward, so that we have it in front of us?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
I can send it to, Pat, please.
Send that to Steve and Perry.
Okay, okay, yeah, I'll do that. Pat, please, I think I already, I think Steve had asked me for that. I think I had sent it, but let me check my emails. Pat, please, to President.
Is that it, Chris?
That's it. I'm sorry, Trish.
I usually interrupt you. It's all good. Not even interrupt, I just jump in.
Okay.
So, I just want to clarify though, I'm not opposed to what you're saying, Mr. Bowen. But I do want to make sure, you know, the reason I said I think you should just review each case. And that case is because I want to make sure you have the funds needed to take care of the fields.
You're talking about fees for?
Yes.
The $20 per player fee or?
Any of it, any of it. So, that kind of goes in line. My other question that I had last month that wasn't broken out here, was it, and it's what I was not clear to. Did all of the fees here, minus the ones that you are still saying no charge, they all went up slightly? Or was it just the, the top two items and the, what increased?
The field use fees for paid to play, as we call it.
So, it went from 700 to 1,000 for the spring to summer? What was it?
750.
Oh, 750?
Yeah.
What was the $500 fee before?
That, there was no fee, but.
Okay.
We figure we still need to take care of the fields during the fall season.
True, so that was zero at one time?
That's a new fee. The pavilions are a new fee because on account of the cleanup after some of these parties.
Well, I was going to say, not that I want to, I love that it's affordable, but $25 for four hours seems awfully cheap to me. But that's, that's your call.
Yeah.
How much use do the non-resident nonprofit, how much use do the fields get from non-resident nonprofit? Should there be a minimal charge even of 100 for that or 50, just to?
Are you talking about the pavilions or the field use?
Nope, I'm talking about the field use. I know, I like to hop around just to keep everyone on their toes.
Well, the field, the field, well, the field use fees will be per team. So, Run and Gun has 14, they'll be paying $4,000.
I see. So, that's per team, that's, okay.
And if they do have a child, I shouldn't say child, if they do have a player on the team, that's from Ansonia Derby, they do not pay that $20. That's rolled into their field use fee.
Okay, thank you.
And the only, the only fee that stands the same is the barber field, where the turf field is. That's still $4,000.
That stays.
Per event with a million dollar policy payable for the town and the field.
Understood.
That has been.
Got that right.
How long has that field been up, like, what, eight, 10 years now, at least? I lose track of time, but that has always been in place.
Okay, and one more question. I'm just going to ask you to repeat yourself, because I didn't write it down until you made the astonishing comment at the end. What were the checks that went missing, please?
It was, we don't know if they're missing, we just.
Or I'm not, I don't want to say missing, but we just don't know where they are.
Yeah, we don't know the money.
It was a Run and Gun, two fees, one was $4,500.
And that was for whom?
Run and Gun. It's a baseball team. They have a facility up in Gray Hill.
Okay, thank you.
And they also, they had two checks, one for $4,500 and one for $2,500. And then the other one was a Connecticut Pride Football. And I believe Zach said they were from the New Britain or Plainville area. So, I mean, we're getting people from a lot of parks that are state-run or built. But, I mean, you got to admit, Seymour does have excellent fields. I drive by a lot of fields in my job during the day and I look and I'm saying, oh my God. It's, it's like watching Sandlot Baseball.
What was the dollar mill check, please?
That was $1,500.
So, there's three, there's three?
There were three checks, yeah.
So, these, I'm sorry, Trish, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay.
These checks were deposited, we just don't know where the money is.
We don't know where, what account they were depositing to. They're, I guess they're looking for it. Rory is looking into it.
So, it's $10,000 between, based on the information that you provided us with.
Eighty-five hundred.
Eighty-five hundred.
Yeah, eighty, yeah.
I'm sorry, 515.
Respectfully, what is being done to prevent that from happening in the future?
Nine five.
We're opening up a separate account now.
Yep.
It's going to be, I don't know if they're going to call it the Enhancement Fund, but I talked to Bill Sewicki this morning and we're leaning to going back to that. There was an Enhancement Fund, a year, I'm going back years ago, when Dominic was doing it. You know, on board with Kurt Miller, we were all on board together years ago. And it was back then, so it's, it's going back quite a bit. So, don't know why that ever got removed off of the bank items or the line items. Don't, don't know the reasons, so.
And you said Rory was looking into that.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So, Bill said he should have some more information on that in a day or two. Hopefully, he'll have it coming next board meeting. I don't know, we've played this board right now about the, all the budgets, so.
Does anybody else have any other questions for Gary? Thank you, Gary, for coming out.
Good seeing you all again.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, all right, take care. Chris, like I said, our meetings are open.
Oh, we got to take action on that.
I'm sorry?
We got to take fiscal action on that. Well, I'll make the motion to approve the fee schedule allowing the committee, Parks, is it Parks and Rec?
Parks Commission, yeah.
Parks Commission to, on a case-by-case basis, review the per-player fee.
Yes, yeah, that's the one that we'll review, yeah.
Ensuring that we have enough funds to maintain.
Yes, yeah.
I have a motion.
Need a second for this before discussion.
I'll second it to get that ball rolling.
Seconded by Chris Bowen. Discussion.
How, can we define what case-by-case basis means in this case? Are we going to look at every player that applies?
We're not going to do anything that's going to be the Parks.
I say "we" as a town entity.
We ask for the rosters. We do ask for the rosters of the teams.
Okay, and this would give the Parks and Recreation Committee the?
Authority to either, to charge the $20 or not charge the $20. If they are in need of money, they'll charge the $20. And if they're not in need of money, they won't charge the $20.
But also reviewing doesn't justify it. I mean, that'll be their call.
Right, okay. I find that to be acceptable.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? Name? Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Gary.
Very good, thank you. Good seeing everybody.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris, thank you.
I am number seven. Executive session to discuss security in cyber, no, no.
Six.
Oh, jeez, sorry. Poor Rob.
Jumping the gun.
You don't want to wait longer? Just asking. It's still him, number six. Sorry about that, guys. Presentation from Information Technology Director, Rob Dyer. Sorry, thank you. Hello, Rob Dyer.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you guys in person. So, I'm just going to give you a quick update. A lot of you guys have heard this before, but there are some new bases on the board. And it's just bases from other boards that are now here. So, I'm just going to touch on it very quickly. So, we can't talk about where we're going with technology without talking about where we came from. So, when I first started doing shared services with the town, Royal Thalia, they had Comcast internet connections, just like your house. Each building and department was all separate and the phone system was unreliable, the internet connection was unreliable. There were a lot of security issues, problems with firewalls and email and all kinds of other things. So, we kind of decided to do the shared services thing and we put a game plan together that we hope to accomplish within five years. And we actually accomplished pretty much everything on that list within three years. And then COVID hit right after that. So, that set us back. But I just wanted to give you guys a little background to understand where we were before I was started. So, that brings you to where we are today. We have made a lot of improvements. We had a heavy focus on infrastructure that really been what we were focusing on, you know, right at the beginning of the shared service, bringing everything up to snuff with where it needed to be. So, we now have town-wide Wi-Fi in all buildings. Our phone system has been standardized on the school district side as well as the town side. And we're working on getting the CD over there shortly. So, pretty much that gives us five-digit dialing across buildings. Now, you no longer have to call the main number and ask for something to get transferred. You can look them up in the directory, file five digits, and off you go. Network stability, we've now run fiber to all of the buildings in town, with the exception of being Public Works, because they're kind of up on that end up there. Mr. Lombardi will be happy to hear that we have Comcast internet going to the transfer station.
Wonderful.
Comcast is actually tiny.
Boom, boom.
Yeah, there's some big, big construction that they have to do to bring internet out there.
Yep.
They graciously, it was $3,600 to run it out there. Comcast said the bill covered it in the contract, if we commit to the contract. So, that's, that ball is on the roll. So, we have fiber to all the buildings now. Nutmeg Internet, which is the fiber that the state provides, we are now on that for Comcast internet connectivity. Our town server failover cluster for high availability. So, you guys have been hearing a lot of stuff about cybersecurity. A lot of towns being compromised, ransomware, things like that, phishing attempts. We've really focused on that. We took some steps a few years ago, I want to say it was 2018. We put a, we came to you guys, we asked you to approve a plan to work together with the schools to put a next-generation firewall in, prevent some of that stuff from happening. At the time, it was really bleeding-edge stuff. We also went with a desktop antivirus solution that dovetailed with that firewall. And I think that's been responsible for us not getting into a lot of the jams that we've seen in the surroundings of town. So. So, let's see, we've expanded, cybersecurity's been, it's really been infrastructure and cybersecurity that I focus. We now have a program called No Before for all of our training for our employees. They basically sit down, they get emailed, we, we actively try to, we do it. We try to fish the town employees, to see if they'll fall for it. And if they do, we get a report and we remediate these people. We send them training videos, we have them go through, basically a little click-through quiz to see if they picked up on information. So that's something that we did to all the current employees and we're gonna do for future hires as well. We're on now a computer replacement, computer replacement rotation. So no computer in town offices are older than five years, which is huge. We didn't wind up with some of the computers were eight, nine years old. We have access control in all buildings, so there's T5 access to all buildings, whether it's a town building, school building, our emergency services personnel have T5s that get them in any building in town. So all of that helps.
Except public works.
Except public works. So what we've done is kind of laid the groundwork with all of our infrastructure improvements. And that kind of allowed us to leverage some of that stuff when it came time to do either procurement or other services that we wanted to provide. Just a couple of examples would be the emergency services radios. So we have a couple of repeater sites up in town. Previously, they were using some old antiquated technology called the T1 circuit. They're slower, they're unreliable, they're susceptible to weather and things like that. They are now utilizing our town fiber infrastructure, so that's one example. The second example would be, if you guys remember back to the pandemic, when that happened, we kind of, we kind of moved everybody to remote. And one of the things we were able to do that I think put us ahead of the game in terms of the pandemic would be our ability to use the soft phones. So our new phone system that we put in allowed us to download an app and go open it up on your phone. And the employees that were working from home, when you call town hall, their cellphones would ring and it would appear as though they were sitting at their desk. So I think that helped out a lot, along with the VPN on our firewall, being able to have people work remotely. I think the pandemic kind of gave us an idea that we were kind of thinking about, you know, now that our infrastructure's in place, where do we go from here? And I think we were looking at starting to move more town services, town hall functions, to an online, web-based version to be more accessible to residents. And I think the pandemic kind of just pushed that into overdrive. So that's one of the things that we're going to be looking at as far as future goals. Like I said, we wanna get the Seymour PD on the same phone system, those are the only outlier currently. We wanna have our continued focus on cybersecurity, some of this we're gonna discuss in the executive session. So we'll expand on that a little bit more. Leverage infrastructure to start bringing more town hall services online, like I mentioned, and continue consolidating IT budget lines from other departments into the IT budget for cost savings and efficiencies. So that's kind of the game plan going forward. Now that we have kind of stabilized the infrastructure, put things in place, I think it's important to, you guys have been excellent, I can't thank you enough for all the support that you've given in terms of the budget and requests, I don't come there often asking for things, but when I do, you've been receptive and I thank you for that. But we do need to continue to keep these things, now that we've brought them up to where they need to be, we have to continue to make sure that they are where they need to be. Do you have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for that?
You had mentioned that the anti-phishing, the No Before, which by the way, my company tried to get me today at work. No. Are they playing, you had mentioned that that was for employees and potential new hires. Are you planning on expending that to people who aren't, like us, who aren't profession, aren't paid employees but have access to the Seymour email system, et cetera?
The answer is yes.
Okay.
We're, we're not gonna have a choice. And one of the things that we're gonna talk about a little later is a lot of the cyber insurance companies, the providers have some new requirements going forward because there's been such a huge impact in outlay of cash on the insurance company part. They have some new requirements, one of which is you must offer a program like that. Now, we've been doing it prior to this anyways, so we're, you know, like I said, a little ahead of some of the other towns. But we're not gonna have a choice, we have to provide it all over.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment, if I may. I am a big proponent of shared services, where it makes sense anyway. So, you know, I hear nothing but very good things that you've done, that's why I'm always a big supporter and I just wanna thank you for being willing to, to do both. I think it's amazing, and I think Seymour is light years ahead of many other towns. It's, I'm so proud of this that we do this kind of thing.
I get calls all the time from other municipalities that are looking to do what we've done here and they, they wanna know how we accomplish it.
That's amazing, thank you so much.
No further questions, thank you, Rob Dyer.
Item number seven, executive session to discuss security and cybersecurity. I will ask that we go into executive session with Town Council and Rory Burke. And Rob Dyer.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion by Chris, seconded by Pat Lombardi, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero.
Eight thirty-five PM, and for the record, no actions or votes were taken during the executive session.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Trish, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain, not necessary.
Chair votes aye, motion carries four zero two, four zero one, sorry.
Okay, I have a, I'll make a motion to move forward the email migration to Microsoft Office 365 not to exceed a total of $32,000.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Hold on.
That's the one, the office migration. Oz, are you ready?
It's getting late in the day.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Pat Lombardi, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero zero, thank you.
Make a motion to move forward with a firewall upgrade not to exceed an ultimate cost to the town of Seymour of $27,000.
So moved.
Second, motion by Trish, seconded by Pat, discussion?
For the order.
Yes.
Should the motions read that the funding is from the ARP funds?
I can add that to my motions.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
Should the motions read where the funding is coming from? Council.
Can you rescind your first motion to include that the monies will be coming from the A, American Rescue Plan, which is ARP acronym?
I'll rescind to add. Are both funds coming from ARP?
Yes.
Okay, so I will rescind both my motions. Can I do both in one breath?
Nope.
I'll make, okay.
Yeah, cuz.
I will make a motion, I will rescind my, what do you want me to say?
You're gonna rescind your mo.
Now I'm tongue-tied. I will rescind my motion for the Microsoft Office 365, 365 email migration and resubmit to.
Nope.
Just, I'm rescinding it, let's start there.
Thank you.
Can we do a bad motion thingy?
I know, right?
Okay, can I have, let's take two, can I have a motion on Microsoft Exchange?
We'll make a motion to proceed with the email migration to Microsoft Office 365 using the ARP funds not to exceed a total of $32,000.
Can I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Pat Lombardi, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, five zero.
I thought you were gonna correct me again. Raise your hand.
I'm sorry about the technical word. I.
So I'll make a motion to, I will, no, I'm gonna resc, I'm gonna still be tongue-tied. I'm going to rescind my motion for the firewall upgrade. You have to rescind your second? Yep.
But it wasn't voted on.
It wasn't voted on.
I seconded it, but it wasn't voted on.
Nope, so go ahead.
Okay, so make a new motion that we will proceed with the firewall upgrade using ARP funds not to exceed an ultimate cost to the town of Seymour of $27,000.
Can I have a second?
So moved.
By Pat Lombardi, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain? Nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Sorry for that painful, tongue-tie of mine.
Oh, where are you going, Mr. Lombardi, I'll be back. Right, night, thank you, Rob.
Thanks.
Rob, who are supposed to get him out of here early. Number nine, presentation from Town Engineer regarding the 2022 road construction program.
Good evening, for the record, Brian Kerriak, Town Engineer, thank you for having me.
Good evening.
I have a little handout here. Each of you. So I would explain.
Thank you.
What it is. So just to recap, there was a bond issue a few years ago, about $5 million. The first year, we focused on the industrial park. The second year, which was last year, we focused on all of the roads in green. For last year, we did all those roads. And we spent about 1.8 million, we spent about 1.5 million the year before. We're at around 3 million, we have about 1.5 to 2 million left. I think it's more than 1.5, I'm still waiting to talk to Doug and Tony to make sure I know exactly how much money we have left because I am not having a budget. My recommendation this year would be to go through, what is it, which is numbers 13 to 18, and we will work our way down until we get close to what money we have left. I am focusing on the more used roads. I have mountain roads, I have Washington Ave, only in some of them, Pearl Street. Those are the more used roads in town. There are a lot of complaints, I also have Seymour Avenue in there, spent on it for a while, I'm sure we'll talk about that in a second. There are a lot of roads in town that have been complained about lately, a lot. But I think this is the best way to use the money to go along with it. Like I said, we're running out of money and this will be the first.
Okay.
And I can explain what we're gonna do on each road if you'd like to, or if you have another question.
I just, I just wanna add one, I've been getting a lot of complaints on Bossford. Bossford, Brookdale to Great Hill Road, because the fire trucks are using that road and the school buses uses that road, and that's not how far the loss of money will be going for, for that road.
Right. I have that up in the loss of area, but it's gonna be a while before we get there because that's not part of the current loss of.
Okay.
But I, I, we can, we can add that, it is deteriorating quickly up there. We can bump that down, it just might bump Pearl Street off. My hesitation on Pearl Street, firstly, can use a lot of work, but my hesitation on Pearl Street is there's going to be a very large development that is starting up there on Simms Street. And so I bogged it down to the bottom of this list because they're gonna be falling about $1,200 feet yards out of there. It shouldn't impact our road, but it just doesn't help.
I would hate to repave that road and then it'd be ruined by those trucks.
Right. The only concern is, I don't know when we're gonna have money, I think we all, don't know that. But I could certainly drop pot for down into this list because we're not gonna get lots of money until we finish whole road, which is gonna be a couple of years.
What is gonna be a couple of years?
Well, it's going up to this year, so maybe next year we can finish.
Oh, okay.
Can't go, we can't get new lots of money until it's finished. We only have two and a half.
Right.
Have these costs, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Have these cost estimates changed since last year, considering the cost of everything?
They've gone up a little bit, and you'll see in the greens, these are my original estimates. Really, all you gotta look at is the dollars per LF, dollars per linear foot.
Okay.
Those are my estimates per linear foot of road, and they change depending on how much work we're doing. You'll see that there's 1.5 in there and there's 50. Most of them are at least 100 to 150, depending on what we're doing. I ticked it up a little bit. That being said, I estimated 2.4 million dollars last year and we were around 1.8. I'm always high, I like being high. Does that keep me from worrying about that? So I think we're safe with this.
Okay.
I have this at around 1.4 estimated. So there's a chance we can do all this and do Bossford and still stay within 1.25% of the amount. But we don't know the exact amount here, because A, we haven't, we don't spend a ton of time doing a full design on these roads, we're more than allowed to just fix it as we know. We, we do some design, but I don't do full surveys and full design plans, it'd be very expensive. We do preliminary, conceptual designs, and then we figure it out where we're up to. It makes the money go a lot further down the road. So that's, that's been our approach on these, it's worked for us well. But it is case-by-case, if there's every way to replace, we replace it. If there's a sidewalk that needs to be replaced, we replace it. We figure that ahead of time, but we don't figure it out right now ahead of time.
Right, and how, yep, how many roads, miles have we done since this started?
Since we started bonding, which was even my predecessor.
Yep.
We have 86 roads in town. I want to say it's approaching 20 miles.
We have 86 roads, but we've done 20 miles.
We've 86 miles.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And we've done, I think we're almost up to 20. Something. Now, some of them are full reclamation, which is a full new road. And some of them, we take off two inches and put out a new reclamation. So it's, it varies. We decide depending on what the condition of the road is, on what kind of level of work.
I agree with you, Marie, I mean, I, Pearl Street probably needs it, but I don't want it to get ruined. My, my bigger concern with that street, only because I live over there and I'm familiar, is the sidewalks. There's a huge chunk, it's, I'm waiting for someone to trip and fall. I know you can't do that till the roads are paved, though, it's kind of a one-and-done.
You can, it, it's just, it's nice to do them all at the same time. We could spend $30 million on sidewalks.
Yeah.
Because there's just so many sidewalks that are just repairable.
I just know the ones going up. They're crumbling. They're pretty flat to the street, too, because I think that road is seeing more of the just keep paving, just keep paving. So up that way, the sidewalks are literally pretty darn close to the road, if they're even still there because they're so flat, the cars are driving over them. So, I don't know.
I try to fix that when we have the opportunity in the area, depending on what we're doing.
Yeah, okay.
Pearl Street can, we can use a lot of it on Pearl Street. We've done some, some major patching over the past few years, and I still have that. That's number 17.
Yep.
About a thousand feet of it.
Yep. I would, yeah, but I agree.
E2 is, is down towards E Street, and I'd like to narrow that, place some sidewalks, do some more work, but.
I know, you could only do so much.
Yeah, there's gonna be a large development.
And you don't wanna do it twice. Nope.
They're also gonna be putting change for that in Pearl Street, so we'd like to get that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Go ahead, Chris.
Rory, you know what I'm gonna ask? Any updates since we last spoke?
Today was the.
For the record, this is regarding Seymour Avenue, which I have a video of. I could broadcast it if I had a Windows computer. It's abominable, it needs to be done.
It's abominable, and it was on the list to do last year.
And.
And the Housing Authority decided that they wanted to put in. And the Housing Authority decided that they wanted to put in new laterals.
I'm aware of this.
And we weren't gonna pave the road into laterals, and then we had to go for grants.
And I agree with this, which is why I'm screaming every time I have an opportunity to anyone who listen, and some who won't, that we need to get these laterals, everything that needs to be done on that road ASAP, because it is atrocious, and people who can't afford to replace the tires on their cars are having blocks. So, what's the update?
So, we met with Dave Kaiser, the Director of Seymour Housing Authority.
Okay.
What he had asked us to do is to submit a small cities grant application in conjunction with the Housing Authority. The laterals themselves are not eligible for the small cities grant. However, independent of the town, the Seymour Housing Authority is also pursuing a CHAPA grant.
Okay.
Connecticut Housing Finance.
It's Chief of.
We know who it is?
Connecticut Housing Investment Fund.
Nope. Connecticut Housing Education Finance Association.
So, the plan is money that they were going to spend. If the town is granted the small cities grant, they will have more, to do more for the residents of the housing.
Okay.
Today was, there is, there is a...
Zoom.
Well, yeah, there is an annual workshop that applicants must attend. So if you guys remember, probably it was this year or so, or a couple of months ago, you approved, awarded in our, the Small Cities Grant Consultant, which was to administer our, I believe, 2016 application, which is a revolving loan fund for housing rehab, but additionally to submit any applications that might occur this year. So we have already selected our grant writer. Why I mention that? The workshop is today, it was today. And so now they're working on putting together the application. So, we, we will not be paving Seymour Avenue this year, because the grants will be applicable this year. We should find out next year. We promised the Housing Authority that we would earmark the money as part of their grant application. So there's a letter, so we'll hold on to the money, and the idea is if we get the grants, great. We might not be able to do it next year, if the construction is taking place next year. But it's, it's the way to, you know, do the most good for the residents of the Housing Authority, even though it's all waiting all over the place. It's kind of the same as Holbrook.
Okay.
Very annoying.
Seymour Avenue, Archery, it can't be used last year.
Call it in. Appreciate you that.
Oh, good question. All right. So we're possibly looking at construction next year. Possibly, if everyone knows right.
Potentially.
What if it doesn't?
If we, so if, if we do not get the grant, and the Housing Authority does not get the grant, then there will be a decision to make, and we're going. You know, our policy has been, if you're gonna be tearing into a road that was freshly paved, you're supposed to pave curb to curb. And so that's additional money for the Housing Authority if they're gonna do the laterals, because then they're supposed to pave curb to curb.
Forgive me if this was mentioned, but what is the, when will we know, yea or nay?
I'm not sure on the deadline. So what's gonna happen now, the application is being written. In order to be submitted, you will have to give your approval. So Tom Foley, the grant writer, will appear before this board, and you'll have an opportunity to ask him.
Very well. Thank you for your time.
No easy answers, Chris.
I'm aware, but I still have to ask the hard questions.
Well, you do, but it's, it's just very frustrating, because our hands are all tied on this.
I understand that, but it's also very frustrating for those residents.
I, I understand that. I, I understand that.
I have the work ready to go. I have the plans ready to go. Come on, easy, pump it up, I don't have a problem with it. It makes sense, I mean, so you have...
I, I agree. We can't be paving the road twice. I also will note that I believe someone mench, was it mentioned earlier that we had missed a prior deadline? Or some?
We did not.
Not us, that the Housing Authority had missed a prior deadline?
The Housing Authority missed the deadline.
Okay.
Not us.
So I'm not mad at anybody in this room. I want to make that clear.
I, I think that's what we're both frustrated at.
Where, I'm screaming about this, because missed deadlines are unacceptable, and, I mean, I have it on my screen, this, this is, it's, it's a war zone. Proverbal.
Well. The roads are bad.
It's been made very fairly, and I'm happy with it.
I'm gonna continue to do so. I appreciate that. I'll continue to do so.
So I've heard that we'll move Bossford Road down, if that makes sense.
Well, I was just wondering, because a resident, I've gotten two, I got two messages regarding it from different members.
It's a legitimate thing.
It, it is.
It does qualify for lots of, but I think we all know lots of takes a lot longer than we have these expected. So Holbrook was approved this week. Long Gate is, was submitted again yesterday. I'm assuming we'll have to have to bid into the summer. But you're talking about Holbrook finishing next year, and then maybe the application getting approved the following year. For wherever, at this point, I would assume that we have some, where the next lot's about to be.
And for those that are gonna be watching this on YouTube, or wherever Rory puts this video, it's, Holbrook Road has been approved. We have to go out to bid, and we say it's not gonna be done until next year, it's because it's probably gonna be started late spring, early summer.
The early summer.
Early summer. And then it's a whole redesign of that road. And we have reconstruction, and we have to shut that road down, section by section, to do it. And it's going to take time, and we cannot do roadwork in the wintertime.
For the most part, yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
That's, that's a, that's a one-year project.
As well, plants are closed.
Right. I just want to make sure it's very clear, and that, you know, that it's not the town, it's not the state. Everything's been approved. We just have to go out to bid. It's gonna start summer, and when winter comes in, we're not gonna be able to do anything, so the project's gonna get shut down. But understand that the road will be closed to, through true traffic.
At various times, in various sections.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Thomas, question?
Anybody have anything else?
I've said my piece.
Huh?
I've said my piece.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
You might want to stay there, though, because we're on item number 10, which is discussion and take possible actions to award the Pershing Avenue Sidewalk Contract. So in your packet, you have three quotes that came in from B&amp;B Engineering for the sidewalks.
Let me give you a quick summary of stuff like this on there.
Go ahead.
Pershing Avenue, it crossed my attention that there were a bunch of tree stumps that had been taken down, and, or a bunch of trees that were taken down. The tree stumps were there. I wanted to look at it. The trees were enormous. I also noticed that all the sidewalks were, were beat up, some of the curving, the driveway. So after discussions with various parties, we decided to apply lots of funding to get the sidewalks redone, the tree stumps removed, whatever curving, driveways didn't, didn't mind moving. So I put together a really quick plan, and cost estimate, my cost estimate was $42,000. Lots of approved for $42,000. So we went up for a very quick bid to see what we could get. And we got three bids, 24.5, 39.1, and 25.8, I think. So...
24.5?
24.5 was a low bid by, I have a look for construction.
Yep.
Modern, a lot of work with, they did very good work. So I was gonna think that they would do the job right if this board would approve that.
Just as an outsider, Griffin Brothers had a much, had a very detailed plan. They're in town, and they were just marginally above the low bid. Can you comment on them?
I'm Griffin?
Well, I mean, can, can you comment on that bid, how they, you know? Because part of me wants to keep the money in town. So, I mean, do you have a recommendation to make here, or?
I would recommend either Forest or Griffin. Forest is a slightly bit cheaper.
Right.
Griffin definitely had a more detailed scope. That being said, I'm pretty confident that Forest will handle all of the items that we showed on the floor. But both are very reputable companies. They both do excellent work. I've worked with them both, give or deny.
So Forest has done work with us before?
Yeah.
No problems?
No problems.
Has Griffin ever done work with us before? Even being in town?
I've worked with Griffin on numerous jobs, but I don't think I've ever worked with them on a town. I have worked with Forest on a town. That being said, they're both well-known.
We have the relationship with Forest.
So as you look them over, what is the, I mean, you have to understand, these have to go out to bid. Our bid is 25, anything over 25, 25,000 or more has to go out to bid. Right?
Right. I don't know how this falls in, 100 or 150.
Counsel?
I spoke about this, but the reason was that he could do a wonderful bid, 150,000 dollars, and not get it backed up. He took it that way, where he could, um, um, that was something. But he believed that it was, that he, if he works, that he will help him.
But if, if, and if we didn't want, and if we wanted to go with some, if the, if the board chose to go with somebody else, we can still go with somebody else, because we got the three bid prices. So what is the board's pleasure?
I would make a motion to go with Forest as the lowest bid, simply because we don't have the... I, I like the idea of keeping it in Seymour, I honestly do. But it's the lowest bid. We do not have to take any further action, and we don't have a, I don't see a reason to not accept the lowest bid that's necessarily justifiable.
You made a motion. I'll second it.
I concur with Select Woman Donca's comments. We have a prior relationship with Forest. It's under the threshold. I fully concur with my colleague.
All in? A motion by Trish, second by Pat. We discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nose? Upstain?
I represent two of the three contractors. I should just stay out of it.
You? Thank you for coming out. Do you know that? Mr. Stank? Chair votes aye. Motion carries 4-0-1. Please note, Selectwoman Stenex abstention. Thank you. Brian, a word to Forest.
Thank you, Rory.
Thank you. Next, mine will stay there. In your agenda is the discussion, take possible action on the underground storage tank contract. As you know, every year, we put money away for the underground storage. Brian, and, well, I should say Beth, went and had sampling done. Sorry, gotta get credit words due. I know. For the undergrounds. Thankfully and luckily, all the analysis came back. Everything came back either non-detect or below levels that we do not have to do any more sampling for. So in your packet is the price, remove the tanks. No.
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 We're not removing the tanks.
No.
No, the, the price is to expand the exploration.
That's right. Sorry. I jumped ahead of myself again.
When are we removing the tanks?
We're not.
We're not. Oh.
I think, I think the...
That's a sheer.
Yeah.
Okay, so since we have the tanks...
My idea is to take them all out.
To have no contamination or minimal contamination. Let's look at the rest of the tanks. There's three more tanks that we don't know.
Right.
Let's go find the results of them. So that's Citizens' Agenda, the Community Center, and the Public Library. So we went back out and got three more quotes. The last guy was not a little better, HRP.
I know.
Triton was high at 23,000, and tie-in bond came at 14,300. That put together an excellent RFP that they were all bidding the exact same.
Yeah.
So 14,300 is a little better, and Diamond is a very reputable company.
They are. Very good. Sorry about that. I wanted to take the tanks out.
I make a motion to approve the tie-in bond bid for $14,300.
Motion by Chris Bowen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Lombardi, discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0-0. You don't represent anybody?
And again, this is just to see how much contamination, or what level of contamination.
No, just to check, to see if there is any.
Any, well.
Any contamination surrounding the tank.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if they locate the tank, you don't really know where it is, and then they, they punch hole in the ground around it.
Oh, I can show them.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you so much.
All right. Item number 12, presentation by Economic Development Consultant Sheila O'Malley regarding the City and Town Development Act. You can sit, whichever you're comfortable doing, Sheila. We sit up here. Sometimes I get up and I sit on my legs like I'm a kid.
Doesn't matter. Yeah, so I talked briefly about this in one of the last meetings that I was at. And it's essentially state statute that gives, that allows municipalities to adopt the powers granted under this statute, which is Chapter 114 of the Connecticut Development Statutes. And it's, it basically is a broad, it allows municipalities to have a broad range of tools to offer for development. And one of them, for example, is to loan money for developments to create, create and establish a capital reserve fund that you can use, quote, bonds for, for development, because a town can only, you know, borrow on its own behalf for public, for public purpose. So it allows you, and Ryan, you could jump in anytime if I'm not, but I'm not properly explaining it. But it does allow a sound, a town to, to borrow money and use it for development purposes. It also allows things like tax exemptions for up to 20 years. I know that your current incentive program is seven years. This is 20 years. I mean, what I, what I will tell you is, it's, it's more tools in your toolbox, right? And again, it's like grants. If you don't want them, if you don't want to offer them, if you don't think a development's worth it, then you don't have to. That's the board's decision based on, you know, you're representing your residents and understanding what, what, what project is before you. So it just gives you some really broad and very powerful tools to use to encourage development into your town, should you choose to adopt it. You can do, you can do other things. I don't want to scare this board, but you can do things like you can allow a developer to use your borrowing power, to use your rate at which you borrow. The developer can use that, and the, and the... to use your rate at which you borrow, the developer can use that and the, and the town acts as a fiduciary. I mean, there's, there are a number of, um, a number of things that you can do under this act.
But if, if we went for that act, we don't have to allow that developer to do it.
You don't. You don't.
We would have to build all that into the tax incentive plan, correct?
Would you have to build it into?
Into the tax incentive.
Uh, you can have two separate, you can have your tax incentive plan and you can have, you can also offer and say, uh, you know, we adopted the City and Town Development Act, which allows us broader powers, but you do it on a project-by-project basis.
Basis, yeah.
Something's a large project and you wanted to attract somebody into, let's, let's call it Trightown, for instance, and you wanted to bring development in there and you needed this extra, you know, incentive or something to attract a developer into that property. This, this allows you that, you know, that broad range, that, that ability as a municipality to do, to do some of the things that you can't, right now you currently cannot do as a town. State just, you know, wanted to get, wanted to give municipalities, um, the option. And so I, I, you know, I'm asking this board to consider that. I just, I think it just gives you a, you know, again, another tool in your toolbox and it also, um, incentivizes or attempts to incentivize development.
Brian, thoughts?
I don't have much. I have to admit that this is more of a proposal. What am I, that would probably be, I would probably refer to this as a question asking.
Thank you. The board would have to adopt it through a resolution and determine one of the conditions or that the town needs one of the conditions in here. One of those conditions is blight and deterioration of existing property. You don't, you don't need some of the other conditions on here, but you just need one. You know, you don't have the, you don't have the issues we have in neighboring towns.
Is there a summary that can be sent to us or given to us so we can read it?
Yep, I can send that. I can send, also send you the, you know, the specific section about what it allows municipalities to, what powers it grant, it grants to municipalities. So yes, I could send, send all that to you.
Could you please?
This is quite a topic for the end of the month.
Oh, no, we still got more to go. Sorry.
Oh, okay. All right.
Um, if you, yeah, if you could do what Selectmen think, uh, suggested, and that was just pu- put a summary together.
Yeah, I'll boil it out for you.
Right, so that we can look at it and then we could discuss it our next meeting and, and set forward if we want to make a resolution and act on it.
Yeah, I want some time to read it before.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
We have.
Wait.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
If I may, do you have a sample resolution you may have used elsewhere?
I do.
Okay.
I should have made more copies, but I do. I can make copies.
Sure.
With some notes on that, but.
Lori can send it to us.
Yeah, let me, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Very good. Well, I think it's good to, you know, defer any action on this on our part until, you know, uh, you mentioned resolution, so that's, maybe that's legal. And, uh, till we get all that information and we want to take a look at, um, take a look at the, uh, sample, okay, and what restrictions that we may or may not have. I mean, uh, I want to get into the specifics of it, but what I'm saying is, is there stuff that we can add or is it restrictive of what the act says?
The statute, yeah. The statute merely gives you powers.
Okay.
That you can use if you choose to do so.
Okay.
It's, it's just allows you to adopt the powers.
All right.
As a minis, as a town.
Goodness. This is something you think we should take action on, so you have this act in your toolbox.
I thi- I think it's a goo- I think it's a good, um, I think it's a good thing for the town. Whether you use it or not is a whole nother matter, but I thi- I think to be able to offer it and to say, yeah, we care about development. We care about it so much that we adopted this City and Town Development Act is probably one of the most powerful things you could do.
I just want to make sure whatever we consider, it doesn't become, we did it for this like company or, or business. So now we must do for next.
Yeah, no, there's no shall and must.
Because we're so cyclical here. I don't want to get down to anything.
And that's why I wanted to talk about the tax incentive program with the, the special committees, yeah.
Okay.
But, but yeah, this is, this is just saying, okay, we've got these, we've got these, um, options and we may exercise them if we feel like it. And we may not if we don't feel like it.
Okay.
That's all.
Great.
I use the expression for something like this, it's like chicken soup in a cold. It may not help, but it doesn't hurt.
No.
Yeah, right. Sometimes it helps, but.
I said may not help.
May not, right.
Thanks, Sheila.
Okay.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you, yes.
Number thirteen, discussion, take possible action to set the annual budget hearing for Thursday, April seventh, twenty twenty-two at seven o'clock PM. We actually cannot set this. This is the Board of Finance to set this. Thank you, Brian. Um, so we're going to push that forward to the Board of Finance. We cannot set the annual budget hearing.
Are you doing that at their meeting on Tuesday night?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so item number fourteen is to take possible action to set the annual town meeting for April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven o'clock PM at the Seymour Middle School Auditorium. We've already asked permission and said in our permission slip to the Seymour Middle School, so that is all set. Um, so I need a motion to, uh.
Make a motion to set the annual town meeting for April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two at seven PM in the Seymour Middle School Auditorium.
Motion by Trish, second by Fred Stanek. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries five, zero. Thank you. Okay. Now, this is to discussion, take possible action to set the budget referendum between dates. Now, mind you, um, each referendum costs the town approximately five thousand dollars. So if the budget doesn't pass on the first one, it goes to the next referendum. That's five thousand. Next one, five thousand, so on and so forth. Okay, the first date is April seventh, twenty twenty, oh.
That can't be right.
We can't, we can't set that. Rory?
New. Yeah.
We can't, Rory, we can't set these referendums. We couldn't do number thirteen, discussion, take possible action to set the annual budget hearing for Thursday, April seventh, because that's the Board of Finance. So how can I take, set a budget referendum?
Well, how are we, how are we doing April seventh if April seventh is the annual budget hearing, we're thinking?
Right.
We can send the rep.
It should be, the first one should be April twenty.
April twenty-eighth, thank you. Okay, Thursday, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two at the Seymour Community Center from six AM to eight PM. Motion by Trish, second by Pat. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries five, zero. If.
You want me to just go down?
Yes.
In the interest of saving time.
Thank you.
I'm starting to tire out. I'm sorry. I'm old.
So am I.
Make a motion to set the next date if needed as Thursday, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-two at the Seymour Community Center from six AM to eight PM for the budget referendum.
Motion by Trish.
Second.
Second by Pat. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries five, zero.
Make a motion to set a third budget referendum if needed for May, Thursday, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two at the Seymour Community Center from six AM to eight PM.
Second.
Motion by Trish, second by Chris Bowen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries five, zero.
And a full abundance of caution should we need a fourth, and I hope we do not, budget referendum. Date to be Thursday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-two at the Seymour Community Center from six AM to eight PM if needed.
Motion by Trish.
Second.
Second by Chris Bowen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now my report. I feel sorry because my report's a little long too. Sorry, I'll go fast. All right. As you know, the town received the project authorization letter for Holbrook Road. We're working on Bungie West Church Street next. I don't know how many times I've been asked this question and how many times I re- I, I replied on this question. Regional Water owns a piece of property on, uh, Maple Street in Silver Mine.
Had Ed.
Had Ed. Thank you. Had Ed. That is Had Ed?
Yes. Had Ed runs all the way into Woodbridge where Silver Mine starts at where the Y is.
Okay, thank you. On Silver Mine in Maple. Regional Water Authority owns that property. In twenty twenty, Regional Water Authority sent letters to neighbors and to the inland wetlands and said they are doing selective tree harvesting, cutting and getting rid of diseased trees, uh, trees that are not, uh, in our neighborhood, they're invasive and they are going to do selective cutting and make it a secessional forest. The town does not own that property. The town has no say in what they're doing. We know it looks awful. We know it looks bad, but we have no say over it. There is not a Walmart going there, Gene. There is not an Arby's. There is not a Trader Joe's going there.
Yeah.
Okay?
They're also going to be, um, planting, um, ma- maple saplings up there.
Okay.
So it won't be ugly forever.
So it won't be ugly forever. The public storage, uh, units on River Road is, uh, April, I thought it was March twenty-eighth, but it's actually April fourteenth. Is that Wetlands hearing? Right. So the public storage units that, uh, Mr. Budzinski was talking about, the inland wetlands public hearing, which will be here, is March twenty-eighth. Public and zoning will hear it on April fourteenth. Okay. Kindergarten registration starts on March fourteenth. Um, we had a power outage on Great Hill Road this morning. Tran- new transformers were put in. Um, they're going from a phase one to a phase through, uh, to a phase three. The power was only out from five AM to before nine AM. Um, the Route thirty-four project apartments were approved by the Planning and Zoning Board as stated in the Valley Indy article. I did not want to say that they were approved in my what's happening in the eight-eight-eight because P and Z did not have time to put out their minutes. And Gene was writing the article about it and I'm not going to scoop somebody out of the article. But I had to wait until P and Z put out their minutes before I can actually say it. Not because I was trying to hide something, Gene. I don't have to hide anything. I'm not afraid. I voice my opinion all the day, damn date. We are informed by Lewis Tree, EverSource, tree contractor. They will be trimming and removing trees, removing the trees if necessary along Old Anson New Road in Mossav, heading down Saint, uh, to South Main. EverSource is updating the power lines from one phase to three phase. This requires cross spaces on top of the poles. They have to cut eight inches, no, eight feet away from the top bar. So that means if they have to cut so much that they're taking, that the tree will die, they're taking the whole tree down. We have no say over that. That is an EverSource thing. Um, we heard the voter, voters loud and clear last year in regards to not knowing when the budget vote is. We ordered the sandwich boards. We ordered twelve sandwich boards that will be put, uh, throughout the town. Um, we ordered postcards that will be sent to each residential address, whether they are registered voters or not registered voters. They will be getting a card to say, hey, the vote is, our budget vote is on this day at this place during this time. We'll be doing a code red. We will be putting something in the Valley Indy. We will be pu- giving, sending something to Ethan Fry at whatever newspaper he is, at the Connecticut Post, New Haven Register, as well as the Voices. So we've hit it electronically. We've hit it paper-wise. We've hit it sign-wise. I don't think there's any other way we could tell people when the vote is.
Point Express?
Point Express, maybe.
You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink it.
The Thomas Seymour was selected to be a distribution site for the Nogtuck Valley Compost and Rain Bear ourselves. You can go online and place the order and pick them up May twenty-first. Lake Husatonic Restaurant, um, completed its final inspections. I don't know when their soft opening is, but Olive and Oil is having a grand reopening tomorrow at four-thirty. Um, some events that are happening, Seymour High School Performing Arts Concert is March twenty-fifth at seven o'clock. And that's about all I have on that. There's a lot more, but you can read it in the eight-eight-eight. Um, appointments. In your packet, Stephen may have given you a new appointment because he said the names are wrong. Rory and I were kind of laughing in my office about it. Um, for the ordinance hearing, Officer Karen Fisher. It's an appointment for two years, expires three fifteen, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
So moved by Pat?
Seconded.
Second by Chris. All in fa- discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, five, zero. Kathy, Kathy Verlich, Strategic Planning Committee. It's a reappointment for two years, expires three fifteen, two thousand and twenty-four. Motion by Trish.
Seconded.
Second by Chris Bowen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries five, zero. Parade and Events Committee, Xavier Vidal. It's an appointment of two years. March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four is expiration date.
So moved.
Motion by Pat?
Seconded.
Second by, I saw Fred Stanek, it's not me. Fred Stanek, all in favor?
I was going to say, that's a tough group, group to become a member of.
Yes, please. All in favor? Five, zero. Tough group, okay. Tracks, tax refunds and abatement in your folder. You will see something from the tax assessor, Assistant Tax Assessor Christine. Um, please look at it and let me know.
Make a motion to accept.
Motion by Trish.
Seconded.
Second by Pat. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, nay? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five, zero. There is no transfers, no correspondence, public comment. All public has left. Selectmen's public comment. I'll go with Mr. Lombardi this time.
I don't really have much other than, um, Happy Saint Patrick's Day to everyone and prayers for all those in, uh, Ukraine. Thank you.
Thank you. Trish?
Same sentiments regarding Ukraine. That breaks my heart. I cannot wait for there to be an end. Also want to make a, a comment about attending the Board of Finance, uh, workshop last night and, you know, I continue to be disappointed that they are not providing an opportunity for public comment as a secondary on their agenda. I know that was recommended years ago by Strategic Planning and they seem, to my knowledge of any meeting I've been to, to be the only holdout and I want to remind all boards and commissions that like it or not and think that it's a good use of your time or not, we're here serving the public and that's why everybody's sitting in their seat. And it is very important that we open up public comment at both the beginning and end because I would have spoken, um, and asked some questions, but I did unfortunately arrive a little late. So, um, there's my two cents there. Um, also in regards to the presentation that was made tonight and regarding the missing checks, the three checks for a total of eighty-five hundred, I do realize it's being researched and I want to be updated on that because I want to be assured they have been found and I want to be, yes.
The checks weren't missing. The checks were deposited. We just don't know what account they were in.
Right.
Okay.
See, my next point though, I, since I'm not verbalizing it correctly since it's nine-thirty and I went to bed thirty minutes ago, honest to goodness. I would also like, while it may not be open for our knowledge, I would like to know that if whoever collected these checks and deposited them into whatever account and cannot locate them now, seems like we're going to come up with a better system for checks and balances, but that needs to be addressed with the individual because I suspect that they're also accepting funds for other items and that's a real, that's a real issue to be accepting that amount of funds and not having any idea which account they were, they were put in. So that's my two cents there as well.
I forgot to add, um, that I ordered a ta- a flag for town hall, Ukrainian flag for town hall. We will be putting that up to show support. Sorry.
Um, I believe that's all that I have. Thank you.
I would like to ask, and you're recording, Cora, to introduce yourself.
I would like to ask the recording crew to introduce themselves to us.
Oh, yes, hello.
Do you like to introduce ourselves to her?
Hi, uh, Sarah Strab.
Nice to meet you.
I live here in Seymour, and I've been, you know, about five years from the time you know, and, uh, okay.
Yay.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Didn't think you were going to be speaking tonight, did you?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming and taking on this task.
I'd like to further, that's it.
Chris Bowen?
I wish to, first off, echo my concern for the people of Ukraine, um, and Russian emigres that are here in this country who have left their country, I would like to bear in mind that we can't fall into a trap of punishing them for the sins of the land that they left, if I'm being honest. Um, I also want to echo Selectwoman Donka's comments on public comment, we need to hear from the public, they lacked us, and I saw an interaction a couple weeks ago, I won't go into details, but I saw one commission member get aggressive with a member of the public, and I don't know what the history is there, I don't care, um, we have a responsibility to hear and listen to the public, and sometimes to tell them things that they might not want to hear, we have a responsibility to the town and a fiduciary responsibility, these interactions aren't always positive, I keep having the, you know, Facebook posts from three years ago brought up, that's part of this gig, um, we ha, we have to be better with the public, and we need to hear from the public and solicit that, um, no matter how painful it might be at a certain time, so I definitely concur with Selectwoman Donka on her comments on that, thank you, and let's go home.
Having a meeting, um, uh, make a motion, are you ready for that?
Yeah.
Can I go, can I do it?
Yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I thought what was going to happen, I thought what was going to happen was a reading.
I'm like, no.
I was getting out the dart gun. Oh, aye.
I don't think you'll ever hear Mr. Stanek.